Welcome, everybody. I'm glad to see we have a few more people than we normally have, so that'll be interesting. What I'd like to do is ask if we can have approval for last month's minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Have roll call?
Andy Charney.
Chuck Lewis.
Here.
Charles Fisher.
Here.
Joe Shaw.
Here.
And myself, George Nilsen, President. We also have representatives from Contani Engineering and Pearson Hughes.
Our first item on the agenda this evening will be 4800 Chichester Avenue. We have somebody here to represent them.
Hi, my name is Scott Swazansky. I'm with Inland Design. I was here, I'm here to, that's our project, 4800 Chichester Avenue. Trying to navigate how I change picture here, there we go. Existing site is 4800 Chichester. It says farmland at the corner of 322 and Chichester Avenue, bounded by properties along Summers Lane over here. We are proposing a 105,000 square foot warehouse office building. From this layout, we have received review letters from Contani Engineering, and I was going to go through the review letter today. Go through a few of the main points we wanted to discuss at this meeting in the review letter. If that is okay with the board?
Alex, you okay with that? And then we can back up with anything they don't cover. We'll let you have an opportunity to chime in anyway, as they go.
Can everybody see okay, or would you like us to dim the lights?
Alright. So on the review letter, the first several comments are about stormwater management. We, we will be able to comply, comments one through 10 specifically, are, all have to do with the stormwater management calculations and design, and we will be able to comply with them. The first item I wanted to discuss is in the traffic section. I'll read the comment. Previously mentioned, the proposed driveway entrance must have its throat length increased to, and redesigned to handle the queues exiting the site for both lanes. In addition, latest submission still includes an internal connection for 92 parking spaces, which is approximately 60 feet from Chichester Avenue. Vehicles exiting from this location will cut across inbound traffic and be blocked from the exit lanes if one truck or two cars are waiting to leave the site. Sure, sorry about that. Sure. Alright, the comment is, as okay. As previously mentioned, the proposed driveway entrance must have its throat length increased and redesigned to handle the queues exiting the site from both lanes. I'll just cover that part of the comment first. So we're talking about the entrance/exit area here. He's talking about the exit lanes. In order to create more space for the two lanes to have a longer queue, we propose to extend this curb line where I'm showing the arrow there, along the right-hand curb line as you're exiting. And that will allow a longer queue for both, both exit lanes. Both exit lanes to have a longer queue. The next part of the comment is, in addition, the internal connection for the 92-party parking spaces, which is approximately 60 feet from Chichester Avenue. Is this area right here. Vehicles exiting from this connection will cut across inbound traffic and be blocked from the exit lanes if one truck or two cars are waiting to leave the site. If the internal connection cannot be closed, it should be designated as a one-way northbound, provide diagonal parking spaces, and all traffic leaving the site should move in a counterclockwise direction around the building. Entrances and exits. Then it states, the ordinance says, which is entrances and exits to and from all street parking areas shall be located to avoid interference with street traffic. We propose to, we're going to narrow this, this lane along these 92 parking spaces is currently 28 feet wide. We're proposing to narrow it to 24 feet, according to the minimum requirement by township ordinance. That would deter any truck traffic from trying to leave this direction. And after internal discussions with our team, we feel that the circulation, the internal circulation is acceptable for our project. Yeah, and specifically, if there's any, if any backups occur, these are going to be totally onsite and not affect any street traffic. They will be fully internal, internal delays. Yeah, Matt Hammond would like to.
So obviously, as Scott had mentioned, there's been some changes that have been made to the site. By township as well as those relate to, and I don't remember if the commission has seen this, but we have proposed that all trucks exit via counterclockwise fashion out to the intersection with Chichester Road. The reason for that is obviously, it allows us to provide for a queue or stacking area right in this location here. Versus them possibly coming around here and then trying to get out this entrance exit, which is what the Contani had raised early on in the process. In addition, what Scott had mentioned, we're going to narrow this drive aisle down to 24 feet. Again, further discourage truck traffic. And then also look at extending this area here, so that if someone, a vehicle, passenger vehicle is waiting to make a left, there's ample room for tractor trailers when we go straight across Chelsea Parkway, opportunity to do so. So that'll be a revision that we'll look to make here in consultation with Contani. There's been a lot of changes, like I said, that have occurred at that driveway to address these.
Conflict with traffic. So one thought might be, instead of trying to, you know, belabor this, you know, whether we should make it counterclockwise or not, would the applicant maybe consider having a note on the plan whereby if this intersection on the facility does become a traffic nuisance to the township's public street there, then the township would have the right of then making that a one-way counterclockwise circulation. So in other words, we would leave it as your intention is being a two-way for cars, but the option would be that the township has a note on the plan that says, if this becomes, if it does become an issue, then we can address it where he's already committed to complying, as opposed to trying to argue with him later also. And that way, we, we move on with that issue, I guess.
No, I can appreciate that. So before we get to that point about the note, what I would say is, is that I can't sit up here and say that there won't be a time that the situation that Alex had described would not occur onsite. That possibility exists, obviously. We would hope it wouldn't, and we would hope that the people that are leaving, the employees that are leaving, are leaving at a time period when it's not significant truck activity. We usually see large trucks, the activity onsite occur during those off-peak hours. But again, could it happen during peak hours when people are entering the exit? Sure. As far as stacking is concerned, yes, it's an internal issue. My job is to make sure, and I'm going to have to make especially sure from the PENDOT perspective, that we're not intersection in Chichester Avenue. That's what PENDOT is going to be concerned with, and that's what the township is concerned with. So there may be instances where cars are backed up here waiting to make a left out, and they can't because there's a couple trucks or a couple other cars. One of the things that we could do is provide striping and signage in this area that do not block the intersection, I think. So that, again, wouldn't say everyone would comply, but at least it provides that belt-suspenders approach to anyone exiting out of this driveway. That would be something that would be easily accomplished. I would say as far as providing a note on the plan, I would be hesitant to provide a note on the plan because, A, I'm not the type of person that likes to leave potential things on the table. So in other words, projects approved and could sometime, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, could the township come back and say, you had this note under plan that says there's an issue, and we feel there's an issue. Well, I can appreciate the township may feel there's an issue. We may not feel that same way, or PENDOT may not feel that same way. From what arbitrage, it's difficult to define what that issue could be. I would say that if an issue did occur and cars were backing up into the intersection, it would absolutely be something that applicant would address and would be required to address, not only by the township, but virtue of our EJOP permit with PENDOT. So again, I can't sit here and say that that situation is not going to occur. It's possible. I think that based on this design and the design of other similar type facilities, this is not unusual. And we'd be more than happy to, again, we're proposing to narrow down the drive aisle upfront. We're proposing to widen out this area to provide more stacking for the two lanes approaching. We can provide signage, we can provide striping. We're providing a significant amount of signage in the rear here in the loading docks to force tractor trailers to exit back out to Chichester Avenue. I think we're trying to do what we can. I just don't like to leave open issues on the table. And I don't think that what's being proposed with the changes that have been discussed would be detrimental to the intersection, negatively affect the intersection.
We'll leave it at that for now.
Okay.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Matt, we'll open it up for public comment.
Sure, there's a few other traffic-related comments that I would say are classified as open, but I don't believe there are comments that can't be addressed through coordination with a township traffic engineer. I will tell you that when we made our previous submission to the township for review, which included an updated traffic study and a revised site plan, that we made a subsequent submission to PENDOT. Again, because we are on a PENDOT roadway, we need to see the highway occupancy perfectly from PENDOT. We did receive a review letter around about the same time as we received a review letter from the township, and PENDOT had approved the traffic study. Basically approved the analysis, approved what we were showing, approved the access, the layout, and basically suggested that the next step in the process, as far as PENDOT is concerned, is the actual design and application for the permit. So based on that, and based on some of these comments, I think some of them are going to work themselves out. Like the type of warehouse, what we assumed the warehouse would be in the traffic study. PENDOT has a note that says based on our assumptions, based on what we call the warehouse traffic analysis, that if that type of warehouse or that type of tenant, not the type of tenant that occupies the building, that we could go back to PENDOT and adjust the analysis. Comment that Alex had made as well, which we find that people can understand that. There's a couple other comments within the review letter that relate to PENDOT improvements on 322, like the closure of Bethel Avenue, and then some of the volumes that were collected, because we did collect volumes during the COVID times. But based on coordination with PENDOT, based on the standards that were published, there were certain adjustment factors that were employed. Traffic volumes back up to account for the four, or the traffic volumes for four. That was all included, but these are comments that, I suppose these are comments, some of these comments have been addressed by PENDOT coordination, but I didn't see anything in here that is and/or items that can't be addressed through coordination with Alex and the township.
While you're talking about that traffic study, that traffic study was forecasting traffic through the year 2025, I believe it was?
2024, I think, 2024, or 2025.
And you're saying that, I didn't read in there where they were forecasting what the effect or the impact closing Bethel Avenue would have on that?
There is no discussion of the forecast of the closure of Bethel Avenue in the traffic study.
Right.
That is obviously something that is being contemplated, being proposed or created as part of the PENDOT project. We're forecasting for three years, or at this point, two years of additional growth.
Yeah, what I'm major, major concern here is that traffic that will result once Bethel Avenue is closed and traffic entering into Chichester Avenue, separate the side, no matter what we do with your project, want to be a quite admired start with.
Right.
Alright, and adding in the additional truck traffic and whatnot without a separate lane for trucks or something like that is going to exasperate, whatever that word is. May exasperate.
So I can tell you that Chichester Avenue right now, trucks are prohibited, large trucks are prohibited to travel on Chichester Avenue. So we anticipate all of our truck traffic to enter and exit Chelsea Parkway.
Yes, well, but that's where all of the work, traffic coming into Chichester Avenue from the Conchester will be coming from. I mean, it, there's no choice.
Correct.
You're either going to get off at 95 and come up Chichester Avenue. I'm not talking about trucks now, I'm just talking about traffic. Either going to come up 95, or it's going up 322, Cherry Tree Road, and then to the Walmart, make a right down Chelsea Parkway, and that's going to be the new entrance
Right.
that PENDOT will be using. So my concern is PENDOT's approach on forecasting here and leaving us with this rerouting of the general traffic, separate aside from the truck traffic, and now adding the truck traffic to it. I mean, that's just my concern, just pointing it.
No, I understand it, I can understand that. What I would say is, is that if we weren't to take into account the closure of Bethel Avenue as part of this project and look at the effects that this project would have on that, it would be extremely difficult for us to apply any sort of improvement that may offset whatever effect this development or any other development would have. Problem is, is forecast that PENDOT has in place, and the changes that are being proposed along 322 are significant. And there's going to be an effect through some of these intersections that may not have been affected today, but will be affected in the future as part of this improvement. I will tell you, though, that similar type concerns were raised when I was working on the other side of 322, further up towards 31, where many municipal officials, many engineers had those same concerns with developments that may have posed in that area by the township. Officials, and after the work has been complete, there's a time period of learning.
Sure.
And there's going to be years of construction and years of detours and things of that nature. So by the time the project is done, 2028, whatever it may be, still going to be a little bit of growth that needs to occur with respect to people learning to do traffic. But I can tell you that that section of 322, the improvements have gone, and everyone kind of learned the lay of the land. It's operating very effectively, very efficiently, more so than I've seen in my 40 years of living in this area. And a lot of the concerns that were raised, some of them valid and some of them were addressed, but it's a matter of trying to picture what it's going to look like in the future. I would say that this development itself, while it is 110,000 square foot building, is not a huge traffic generator, and it's not a huge percentage of the traffic that is going to be traveling through this area, especially with all the
We will open it up for public comment when we're done with the presentation. Hold on to your comments.
So Matt, you are not going to address that in the traffic study yourself?
Correct.
Okay. I'll let Al Frederico.
Al, I can do that.
Yes. There was, there was one of the traffic comments that requested the applicant consider making repairs and improvements to the deteriorated section of Chelsea Parkway. Did any further movement come from the applicant on the offering to make those repairs, or?
Well, I think our, so our response was that we would be happy to discuss with the township what those areas of disrepair are, and the extent of that area. So I think, once we know what we're talking about, obviously, if the township is talking about milling and overlaying and creating a large portion of Chelsea Parkway, it's probably not in the realm of possibilities. But if certain areas that need to be improved, and I'd be more than happy to meet you or Al or the township, anyone out there, and kind of identify those areas, we'd be more than happy to entertain that.
Yeah, we're looking more at, I mean, I try to be careful with the wording we put, deteriorated. We didn't want you to think that we were saying just milling and overlaying the entire street. More looking for base failures and taking care of the isolated repair areas.
Yeah, I think if we can just have a better understanding of what we're talking about.
Okay. With traffic, I'm sorry, yes, I'm good with traffic, Tim.
Another note on traffic I would like to bring up is we're, one of us, we discussed our proposed, or concerns within PENDOT right away along 322. And we have discussed that grading and swells we have proposed in PENDOT right away, and they verbally, verbally approved it, and we will provide written approval when we receive it from them. We just wanted to let you know we are in discussion with PENDOT about what we are doing.
Yes, that's all. Right, and Al just told me he had some discussions with with the PENDOT designers also, and they did say that as long as it doesn't conflict with what they're trying to do. So I would, my initial thought was, when I heard that, that would mean that PENDOT should have some type of grading plan that you would be able to superimpose to try to verify that you're not conflicting with what they're doing versus just a general comment that, that they made, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know if they're at that level yet, but I mean, I would think that's the only way to verify that you're not conflicting, is.
Agreed, and just to be fair, so Scott's end of work, are you pleased to still work? As product manager. Working on that section. Whether what you're doing. But it's going to be and that's the confirmation that we got back. Different work plans. Some have files, but they've seen our players.
So they'll, so they'll be sending us something in writing, then, you're saying?
Yeah, they said, they, they requested our full set of plans. I've only shared, I only shared our grading plan, and they would like, they're going to cross-reference them with their plans and then give us some more.
Okay.
Alright, um, next comment I wanted to address was commented that we'd like our ADA parking to be located in front of our potential office area of the building. Currently, we have three ADA parking spaces in this lower right-hand corner as we're looking at the plan. We have an ADA compliant ramp designed there to get up to the building entrance in this south-southern location on this southern side of the building. The other location for the office area entrance would be over here, which is several steps up to get to the first floor elevation. We feel that our location for the ADA parking on this side of the building is in the, in the ideal spot for our design ramp. And if we moved those spaces to be in front of the potential office area, that would create a longer distance for someone to travel to get to the, this ramp we designed to get up to the building and access the office area.
So you're saying you can't fit another ramp on the site?
I was saying we have a ramp and.
No, I agree, I know, I see the plan, and I know they have a ramp there, but I thought the goal of the ADA parking criteria is to try to have the shortest and closest distance to your entrance, and that potential office area could be, you know, a sub-d area, a sub-leased area to a completely different business owner, or it could be the area where your employees have to go for the business, but it would just make sense that if that's where you're planning, you would also be planning for ADA to be as close as possible there, so.
I would say the other consideration with the fact that we change the travel patterns of the trucks is that they all have to exit out this way, so the closer to those handicap blocks, the closer you bring the area that's going to have more activity.
I was looking on the parallel side of Chelsea where they would go from that side there, yes.
Well, the building, our office area is not set, I mean. If another ramp is warranted, I think that would be looked at for the design of the building. Our opinion in that, thoughts are, that ramp provides access and
Without, without questioning whether or not you've studied this well and all that other stuff, with 24-foot that you're running through your parking lot now, 28 to 24, doesn't have to run the entire length, 28 to 24, as long as it's down.
28 to 24, doesn't have to run the entire length, 28 to 24, as long as it's down to 24, the trucks can't do it. So up near the building, you could have a 28 foot opening, which would give you plenty of room to put the ramp in without worrying about pushing your parking spaces out into the 24 foot area. Follow what I'm saying?
No, I follow what you're saying. I think I'm here before you have the direction. Um, Chichester Avenue. But I don't know that it's necessarily a function. I was trying to say, what is that? Located in the trucks. Already in the trucks in terms of their exits. I have a couple of trucks that where there's cars coming down this house and it's funny. Or if you want to, it's located or like just
Next comment I was going to discuss is request in the zoning table to note the proposed height, specified height of the parapet wall above the roof line elevation of the building. Like to let you know, our final building design is not complete yet, but once it is complete, the building height and any parapet height will be added to the zoning table and will, we will be sure that it will comply with the current building height requirements that are required for this zoning district. Next comment I want to discuss, you proposed request an additional sightline profile. Let me get to the sightline profile sheet.
Are you able to put a split screen on there by chance or no? It only, it would be nice to have the landscape plan on one side and your your section view on the other, so you can kind of get a feel for when you see the trees where they are in the site crossing your section lines, unless you already have them on. Oh, okay. No, you have the landscape plan on there. So just see if we can see both on one of the views, hopefully.
We created these sightline profile views. Basically, on the landscaping plan, number two would be from Summers Lane. Cross-section number two would be someone standing on Summers Lane and looking towards our building. And on the sightline profile, we added our proposed landscaping. The darker trees are the estimated height after five years of growth. The lighter tree in the, uh, the lighter tree shown would be a fully mature tree to show how high the trees will be in the buffer zone between the building and the residential zoning neighborhood. Requested an additional profile to be shown from the Summers Lane intersection up here towards the building. We will provide that. We have a view from Chichester Avenue looking towards the building, which is down in the lower left-hand corner of the screen. View from 322 looking up towards the building. And we have another one. The, the fourth one is from 322 up past the overpass, looking towards the building and that's at the bottom of the screen here. Much longer profile. Showing the deciduous trees, uh, full grown in the profile. You stated that, uh, I just wanted to point out that the outer outer perimeter of all of our proposed trees are evergreen trees. Those are the evergreen trees, which will provide, uh, screening year round. And then when, when these are all the trees. So we feel we've met the buffer requirements with that evergreen tree outer, the outer edge, the whole way around the building and yeah. So the, the next comment you, you requested evergreens along Chichester Avenue and I'm going to go back up to our landscaping plan for that one.
You look like 10 hours time limit as well. Finding that screen. Four feet that we're going to actually gain by narrowing down that driveway and that indicated will allow, pull that curb back along Chichester. Certain, certainly in certain locations. But now we have enough width to plant additional evergreen screening. That extra four feet will go a long way to allowing us to really plant that screen along
I'm going to zoom way in for everyone because the limiting factor along Chichester is the Pendott right-of-way line. As you see right here, there's a light, light gray line, about nine feet off our curb line, current curb line. And if we move that curb line in, narrow this drive out down to 24 feet, we'll be able to move that curb line in four feet. We'll have room for the required parking lot landscaping. Well, as a row of evergreens to go along this section of the parking lot. Back here, the, the right-of-way jobs can be narrower. So we have a lot more space along this uh, northeastern section of the site to add a row of evergreens along there. And we'll regrade the grading so that the evergreens are not, are not planted in within a swell and it would be more sheer situation off down towards our curb line and into our stormwater system.
Here we are pointing out again, so we have landscaping on Chichester that's required at the end of the parking lot.
Yeah.
We didn't want to interfere with that requirement by simply testing with evergreen, but it sounds like now that extra four feet goes to that location, you will now be able to
Yeah.
Have the required landscaping, parking, or I'm sorry, parking lot landscaping, parking lot side and then add evergreens on the streets.
If you can go back to your sections for a minute?
Yeah.
The sections, when I look at them, I don't know if they've made your case. The section that goes from the residents along Summers, I would, I would think you'd want to try to prove what the residents in their backyard are going to be seeing versus just walking along a sidewalk where you might have that, a house blocking a view from the pedestrian on a sidewalk. But I think people trying to enjoy their rear yard on a, in the summer with a barbecue or something in the backyard, I'd be nice to try to get an idea of you, are you really trying to, or I'm not saying that you're trying to, but can you really provide landscaping that will screen the, the building or, or are they going to be able to see it from their living room or bedroom window or from the, like I said, they're just their deck? So that would be the, the one comment with the Summers view. I think when you try to show the view from Chelsea Parkway, uh, you, you, your, your section view is trying to paint a picture of like, there's this thick row of trees, I guess, is going to block it. When I look at, when I'm looking at the plan view, I guess it might be, you might get lucky with just one tree that might be, unless you're literally standing or driving right at the spot of where number three is, maybe that one tree will block the building, but if you look a little bit to your right, the whole building will be exposed. But most of the traffic coming from Chelsea, I guess, is going to see that building because your landscaping isn't really that heavy in that area. And then when you try to show it from the 322 at the number four section, I mean, I guess it looks like you might have about four trees at the most that's trying to, to block the whole building view. It's not like you really have, you know, like a dense wooded area there. No, I'm just saying you just have.
It's all stormwater management.
I, I, I'm not, I'm just telling you what I see. I'm trying to see that, that you're saying that, you know, you're looking through there and there's going to be a parking lot, the hillside, the parking lot, the building, everything's going up the hill and you might have about four trees that are, that's going to be blocking that view, I guess. And those are, I guess, I believe they look like they're going to be deciduous trees. So you're not really going to get an all-year screening with, with the deciduous trees there. I don't know. I, I think, to me, I think this building is is the, is, is, is the thing that is going to be hard to it'll be hard to try to conceal with landscaping, but.
Have to do this plant visual barrier. We have to plant this screen. We're meeting those setbacks. Getting all the planting required by the requirements. That's the requirements required by, and now we're actually adding planting. That's, with that's more evergreens here, we're going to do that. We're going to add. There are certain areas where absolutely you're going to get built. It's an industrial-y zone property. But when you're sitting here at Chelsea Parkway, well, that's you're going to plant the intersection. Yeah, of course you're going to see our if you're, you're coming down the highway, you've got a stormwater act, but so it's by the tall swale, you can't fill that up with additional.
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that you have to fill it up. If you can't, I'm just saying that you're, to me, these sections were just simply trying to make a presentation that everything's going to be uh, not visible. And what were the tree heights you said on, on all the lower heights? What, what are those heights you're showing?
The evergreens, the evergreens over here, she's 20 feet in five years.
Okay. So we're still, I mean, I mean, when, on day one, we're going to have six to eight foot high evergreen trees.
The minimum required is six foot. And the deciduous trees that are 35 feet after five years of growth.
That, I don't know. I'm not a landscape architect, but that, that doesn't sound, that doesn't sound feasible in, in a parking lot setting of.
The ordinance prescribed a minimum all that planting for all of the
I'm not saying you're not complying, but I mean, you're not, you didn't, aren't, you weren't showing realistically, I guess, from day one, what it, what, what these plantings is really going to be visible there. You're and I think five years for the deciduous trees is, is a stretch to say that you're going to have that height in five years for those.
I have a couple more. I was going to couple more comments. I wanted to bring up, uh, commented, we'd like the sidewalk, the sidewalk adjacent to parking areas should be wide, should be six foot wide. Uh, as an alternative, we would like to propose to add bumper blocks along, on all parking spaces that are adjacent to sidewalks. Or to allow there to be enough width on the sidewalk for that would be in all the parking, all the parking areas that are anywhere towards the building and adjacent to the sidewalk. Along the south side and the we asked about, commented on our retaining wall. Uh, we have a three-tiered, three tiers of wall on the southern side of the property. We discussed the, we discussed the wall design with the structural engineer. And they said that spacing we are proposing is sufficient for them to design an engineered wall to we want it to perform. And engineering wall design will, the details for the engineered walls will be provided, will be provided prior to construction.
We were requesting a preliminary retaining wall analysis. So if they can provide that, that'd be great.
Yes. Yeah, they said they could. We just had a verbal discussion about it, uh, just before this meeting and provide that for you.
Okay.
Those are the items. In your review letter, I wanted to discuss the remaining items. We are, will comply on all all the remaining items that did not discuss.
Alex, you want to go over anything that further concerns with? Everything else is all covered.
Yeah, I thi- I think we've covered it. Yeah.
The actual construction of the building? The rules, the outside appearance of the building and whatnot? How's that mold into the residential aspects of what's supposed to fit within the confines of our ordinance there? Mix where you have something buffering up against residential areas and you have commercial property being put in. There's some kind of piece of this between the two and not just still building bang, bang, and I don't
Ideally, I'm sure there's, there's some language to that effect, but I, I think it's unfortunately on the vague side. I don't think we, I don't believe our ordinances have any specific requirements that, uh, address that. So it's something that we have an opportunity now to try to see if they can provide renderings and, and see if they can make the the burden of trying to show that it, that they feel they can show, they can prove to you that you feel comfortable that it would blend in appropriately.
Anybody on board have any questions? Indy?
Questions, comments? One of the things that can traffic and the number of I read, read the traffic assessment, it's about, I think, 38 vehicles and 40 in the I'm seeing all the parking spots and loading docks. Hard for me to wrap my head around why so few vehicles fire that many parks. Assessment did talk about the types of vehicles, but if you could.
So as far as the traffic side is concerned, whenever we look at this type of use, it's industrial. Right? The, the two main types of vehicles. That may include the trucks, we don't say trucks, we're actually talking when you saw the numbers and within the study, there is a table that kind of breaks that out. Um, and it looks at the number of vehicles during the AM peak hour and the number of vehicles during the PM peak hour. As a traffic engineer, uh, one of the things that we want to look at, uh, when we analyze any type of developments, we want to look at what is the peak of traffic? And if we were to superimpose that type element on top of that. There are any negative effects and if so, we need to mitigate. So in the traffic study, uh, table six, we talked about that this site, based on its use rate, 36 trips in the AM peak hour. So that's the highest hour of traffic. 37 truck trips in So the one issue an issue, it's more of certification is the fact that ordinance An issue, it's more of clarification, is the fact that ordinance. Sense of commercial use requires one split. There may be a significant amount of parking spaces on this site. Due to the fact that you're necessarily to the amount of traffic we anticipate. You could probably provide less parking on this site. They'll be just fine with respect to the amount of traffic we anticipate in and out of this facility.
Matt, sir, just for clarification, do you anticipate seeking a variance from the zoning hearing board to reduce the parking to three spots for tractor trailers and roughly forty parking spots for the building? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir.
Okay.
No. What we're saying is we're complying with the parking. What's shown on the plan complies with the parking ordinance requirements. But it doesn't necessarily correlate the amount of traffic at this site, what we anticipate.
So you believe that you'll be overparked,
Correct.
but you're not gonna seek a variance to reduce your parking down to what you believe you'll need to use for the site?
That's right.
I.
Clear, the current parking is based on the ordinance, not on the need.
Correct, correct.
But I'm, I'm still confused, like, as she is. Facility like this, I would think that they probably have some type of standard shift, seven to three, nine to five, they probably have, so, so if you have that many spaces and you would, you should have almost everybody trying to come in within a half an hour to forty-five minute period range at the most, and you're over two-hour period, I guess you said, how many cars?
One hour.
I thought you said seven to nine, oh, with the one hour within seven-nine. And one hour, which would make more sense of where everybody's trying to come in on a seven to three shift, let's say. You said how many cars to park?
Thirty-eight, thirty-six, thirty-eight.
So if you're anticipating thirty-eight, you're, for the record, clearly stating that you might need only forty, forty-five parking spaces for people to get to work?
Sure, that, that, so.
If we're, if we're all trying to come to seven o'clock in the morning to this facility for work.
Right, and not everyone's coming in at the same time.
I know, not at, but within, like I said, probably within an hour. If you only have forty-five employees, you're gonna get forty, you'll hit your thirty-eight to forty-five in the peak hour, would make sense to me, but there's a hundred and sixty-seven spaces, not. And the ordinance, the way they calculate it, only required one sixty-five. So, and yes, if you, if you don't need a hundred, if you only need forty-five and the ordinance is one sixty-five, why'd you have, why'd you even put in two extra spaces? For example, to me, that sounds like you need a lot of spaces.
We don't need space, we can take away the two if we want to.
Well, well, if you don't need that many spaces also, you could, we have, in, in the town, had the applicant put down an, an area of parking that would be designated for parking. We would show it as future parking spaces. There's a note that says if parking issue becomes an issue and we have to increase parking spaces, there it is, you will install it. But to conserve the, the construction, construction and, and traffic, if that's truly the case, you could do future parking layout too, and not, so it just, it's, it just seems like a complete extreme to say that we have a hundred and sixty-five spaces, but we have thirty-four cars in a peak hour.
Again, just, just keep in mind too, that this issue comes up, that municipal ordinance is relating to parking. And I don't, and I can't speak to the, the Upper Chichester's ordinance with respect to when it was adopted, with respect to parking and how it was adopted, what went into coming up with those numbers. I can tell you that I've looked at parking requirements in many municipalities over the years, and some of those parking requirements have been in place for twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years. And others, they just go and say, oh, you know, Upper Chichester has a good ordinance, I'm just gonna copy their requirements over.
I, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say that you've calculated wrong, just, I, I, I'm, I'm saying, I, I would almost say that maybe you don't need that many parking spaces, but maybe it would be to your interest to then put, show us future parking spaces for now, then.
Interpractability, realizing, I'm going to detect it.
I, I, I did not say they didn't do it right. I'm not, I'm just saying it is, it is a stretch. I, I never said to Matt that he did his calculations wrong. I'm just saying that it almost sounds like, I'm agreeing, it, it could be lower. Warehouse usually doesn't have that many, I'm, I'm with you, I'm, I'm with it. So it, it would make.
Come in here and put on sixty-five parking spaces if that's what we think we need, because we don't comply.
But, but if you show it as future, I'm saying, then we, the town, I just explained.
Doesn't mean we need it, if, if we determine and we get further in this process and ultimately say, but if you really don't need them, we prefer that you show them as grass for now and if you need them, great, then we will. But right now, our obligation is to demonstrate compliance. Last thing we wanna do is come in here and have somebody say, well, you've got a hundred and five thousand square foot building and you're only showing seventy parking spaces. Possibly service that building with seventy parking spaces, you're blowing smoke. So what we're doing is showing compliance.
Okay, but I think you, the point you were missing is I was, in a way, trying to say to Matt, I, I agree that you probably don't need it, and I was just trying to say that if you were gonna, and if you wanted to put future, you can. But yes, I, I think that a warehouse facility, unless it's gonna be heavily manned, of which even when you watch news and it sounds like the technology's getting these warehouses with robotics anyway. So I mean, I still agree that you probably don't have that amount. But I guess that would be the explanation of what, you know, Matt is, I think is trying to get, is that the ordinance requires X amount, but that facility probably doesn't need that amount. It just happens to look that way. But at the same time, I was just trying to make sure that if you were willing to concur with that, you'd also be willing to concur that we don't have to put all that parking spaces down. You know what I'm saying?
My personal opinion is that we don't need a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces.
Right.
Right, that does answer that question.
Right.
Thank you. So in a twenty-four hour period, what is the estimated number of passenger vehicles versus vans versus tractor trailers?
So again, in, in Table Six, and that same table that I just quoted before, in the peak hours, we look at the average weekday. Traffic, we anticipate the average weekday, so we anticipate a hundred and forty-eight vehicular trips over the course of twenty-four hour period and sixty-four truck trips. When I talk about a trip, when I say trip, just keep in mind, I say trip, one car entering the facility is one trip. That same car leaving the facility is a second trip. One vehicle, two trips. So over the course of the day, by say a hundred and forty-eight trips, seventy-four vehicles. Correlate to two shifts.
The other issue I wanna talk about is not about traffic.
Sweet.
It, it's about historic preservation. The proposal is to remove all of the buildings on the site, including the house that was built in eighteen twelve, the nineteen fourteen barn, along with the various agricultural outbuildings. So besides the last farm in the township, the Hamby Farm is part of a complex of historic buildings along that section, Chichester Avenue, that are associated with Saul Cal Blarkin, who was a prominent Quaker leader and educationalist. Larkin and his descendants owned the property through most of the nineteenth century. I don't know if you're all aware, but Upper Chichester has a very deep Quaker history from the founding of the state of Pennsylvania to present day, when we have one of the longest continuous meetings in the state. One of the more significant events in Quaker history was the eighteen twenty-seven Hickside Orthodox split in the Philadelphia Quakers. Following the split, the Hicksites kept the Meeting House on Meeting House Road. Saul Cal Blarkin though, was a strong supporter of the Orthodox brand. He and others organized a meeting of their own. And Larkin was the head of that Orthodox meeting from the time of the split until his death in eighteen seventy. So during his leadership, Saul Cal Blarkin donated an acre of land at the corner of Chichester Avenue and Larkin Road, which is obviously named for the family, where the new Orthodox congregation built the Meeting House and the school. Both of those buildings are still standing and have been adapted for reuse as commercial properties. Following passage of the public school laws in Pennsylvania, Saul Cal Blarkin was one of the first school directors. He was one of the directors on the first school board. When the local public schools became overcrowded, in eighteen forty-two, School Number Three was established and it was initially held in the Larkin House, until the Larkin Schoolhouse was built on the corner of Summer Lane, Summers Lane and Chichester Avenue. That schoolhouse is also still standing. It's been adapted for reuse as a private residence. So the collection of buildings, the barn, the two meeting houses, the schoolhouses, are all the physical reminders of an important time in our township history. And it's my hope that a way can be found to preserve those buildings on the site in the future use of the property, as opposed to the current plan to demolish them all.
Thank you for the, the history. It's more than I was able to bond.
I have plenty more.
So unfortunately, I was not at the last planning commission meeting when this was presented. But I believe what was passed along to me was that we were asked to try and sit down with what we were told were appropriate personnel to talk about, particularly the home on the site. And we did that, we actually had a meeting. And we made some suggestions and some comments and some things that we would be willing to consider. I believe that a prior plan for development of the site talked about maintaining the home and simply relocating it on the site. We talked about that, we talked about the possibility of taking the home and maybe relocating it somewhere else that might be more appropriate or what people might prefer. And we haven't gotten any feedback. We actually even provided a plan that showed the possibility of relocating the home. So we're still waiting on feedback from the township on those concepts. Quite frankly, and I don't know if this was discussed last time, what we shared at that meeting was the house is in pretty poor condition, as it is today. The barn is actually probably in better condition, and it might warrant trying to focus more attention on the barn. Given the history, maybe not, but it might warrant focusing more on the barn and seeing if we can incorporate that barn into our site somehow. But these are the things that we talked about in that meeting, and we're still waiting on feedback. So we're not foreclosing by any means the possibility of doing something to preserve some of that history here, whether it's relocation or what have. So that's where we are right now, and we'd love some feedback.
Happy to hear that, thank you.
Thanks.
Is, is there a proposed exterior for the building at this point, or is it still? Guess I just have a general comment. I know traffic studies and estimations have been done. I just find it very hard to believe that this would not negatively impact traffic, especially further down the Chine. To zero impact. Well, I mean, not, not zero, I know, I know you're not saying zero, but have you ever driven down Chine Avenue?
So I would say it's not, it's not zero. We have suggested into the H of the application, to the application. Not, not only as it relates to creating a fourth leg of the signalized intersection, but obviously turn lane into the site, as well as really the most important aspect of this. After we're going to be looking at question in the township's traffic interview in the review letter about the next intersection down on Chichester Avenue, possibly extending some of the pews, but that would also create obviously There are things that we're doing to help kind of not only mitigate the impact of this development, but more so try to improve upon some of the issues.
Now, is the assumption that this is gonna be a twenty-four hour facility operating?
Can you answer that? I can tell you that in a traffic study, obviously, we assume hours of traffic, because that is, we wanna make sure that it may work. What we also looked at, I'm trying to say analyzed, we also looked at our kind of employees or I don't really answer whether or not facility or not. Just, you know, that, that we'd be able to determine if it's a.
Because, because my only worry is, so you have all these properties back here, and you have tractor trailers coming around in the morning, midnight. Is, is there any way to attempt some noise reduction for the people that live on those properties? Not just a screening trees?
Just note that there, we are not allowing trucks. All trucks that are entered, picked up this way.
But even then, they're still gonna come around to the back and on the bottom of the property, you still have pouts that are right there.
Agreed, yes.
And the trucks are gonna be idling at night and making noise and and they've got the dumpster there too, not too far from.
I'll just, I just wanna clarify, that'd be. Obviously. Not proposing any of it. Yeah, I, I would just say the, the hours of, the hours of operation you we have all these facilities, very rare that any of them operate overnight. I would say that I have a couple in Florida that take long hauls and occasionally take a delivery in the middle of the night. I don't know, rare, very occasional.
We're, we're saying rare, but still possible. And, and, and it's gonna be a tough sell, I think, for the people that are trying to sit in the backyard. Boys come up in the morning and they're like going to the entrance.
So what we would, what we would put on our tenants as we pass on.
I can hear a jay train going down the highway at one AM. I don't think, you understand, I'm throwing a here, a truck idling half the distance to my house.
I'm sorry, you can't have any comments right now. It's a valid comment, but we'll have it when we have it. You're gonna get your opportunity. As soon as we're done with the presentation.
Okay.
Okay? I, I can't give you the timeframe, because I don't know how many more questions the panel may have here.
Florida for the moment.
Yeah.
Could any thought be given to potentially increasing the size of the trees for the border? The initial size, so they don't have to wait for it to five years, then to be fully matured?
So I'll, I'll answer that question, so.
So, some of the concerns have already been covered, particularly by Chuck and Cindy. But I do have several. I live near a facility that operates twenty-four seven. Taking cars off of rail cars, put them on, moving trains in and out. And let me tell you, it's not pleasant. So, I'm just curious, do any of you? So I'm just curious, do any of you live near the facilities that you're building? Of course not. Okay, so I'm going to reserve any other comments that I might have on that in that regard to hearing from the public. Because I'd like to know how they feel about what you're putting up, and then I'll gauge which way I vote based on what I hear from the public. Thank you.
All right. And I'd like to just back up a little bit to back to traffic just for a short period of time. And what I'm imagining is 322 projects completed, and there's a tremendous amount of traffic coming down Chelsea Parkway. I'm anticipating that's going to be a problem whenever that happens. As long as Bethel Avenue is going to be closed and everything's going to be diverted down Chelsea Parkway. At whatever period of time that happens, I can see eliminating my concerns for your facility if you came down Chelsea Parkway and there was a left-hand turn lane. There was a center lane for through traffic. I wonder where that would go. I think it would go right into your facility. And a right-hand turn lane, that would eliminate, almost eliminate, the potential of your trucks impeding our traffic, the township's general traffic, from having to go through. And I don't know what the width of Chelsea Parkway is or how much we'd have to talk to the current landlords of Larkin Corner who own part of the parking lot there, or how close they are to the buildings, or when or where you would expand that. But if you're going to have a straight-through shot right into that building, the trucks would be almost non-existent from a standpoint of worrying about traffic. They'd have their own lane, except for your workers who would also go in that lane, but that's not a big deal anyway. But it's just a thought. It's something I don't know whether or not that's possible. I did mention something about the buildings, and I happened to fall across the statute anywhere, the ordinance, at 675E, which simply says, dealing with the building, "Each building shall be designed so as to minimize its non-residential appearance insofar as practicable, afford minimal external evidence of the operation conducted wherein." So my point being, when I said, what's this building going to look like? Is it going to be just a steel structure? Is it going to be some kind of structure that is going to accommodate its acceptance into the community as part of the community without just drawing attention to, wow, there's a warehouse? That's what that particular section is, and I agree, Alex, it's a little ambiguous. There's no real, using words as much as practicable and stuff like that leaves a lot to be interpreted. But if the building had some kind of design that in itself made it, besides the trees, mold into the neighborhood, it would be a little bit more advantageous. That fourth view line that you're talking about, if you go up into the Yakme parking lot and look down, the whole Handby Farm is naked to the world, and there's no way you're going to hide anything. You put a 100-foot tree there, you're still going to see down and see that it's some kind of warehouse unless on the top of the warehouse you wrote, "Welcome to Upper Chi," or something like that. No way that that's not going to be seen. So agreed, if you were standing there and looking down, some higher trees might abate the fact that there's a warehouse there. Funny story about warehouses, but I won't mention it now, it takes too long. The other concern that I have, and it's a major concern, and I think it's something that, I heard something that you said that sparked some interest, and that was with respect to the buildings that are currently on the property. You're waiting for feedback. And what I think this board would want to know is, what is the ultimate decision with respect to the building? Buildings and how they're going to be handled? And I'm wondering, and George, you can chime in on this. It seems apparent to me that the movement that we're doing here in Upper Chichester with respect to streetscapes and revitalizing the area and whatnot, we're taking into consideration our overall appearance and how we represent ourselves as a community. I think the Historical Society would be very much interested in sitting down with you and whatnot, trying to work out some kind of an agreeable resolution to this with potentially kicking around the ideas as to what might be tenable, whether barn substitute is tenable, whether building movement is the only answer, et cetera. And I think that Cindy, you know, you can speak for the Historical Society if you want to, but how you'd feel about that?
I think that's a great point, Charlie. And when earlier planned with, not on the planning committee, but we did talk with Oliver and the township. Moving the house on the site. Yeah.
George, how do you feel about that?
So I'm going to make an assumption that this group is going to be coming back to planning, but again, I'm not on the board, so I don't do any of their voting recommendation. But my suggestion would be prior to whatever the next step is, it would make sense now that the plan has been presented to the public to incorporate the Historical Society into the conversation of.
With that, I'd like to open it up to public comments. We're going to have public comments within the room, and at the conclusion of the comments within the room, we're going to open up the public comments over the phone. Okay? So anyone listening right now, you will have an opportunity also to call in, and I'll give you that information when we get to that point. So what I'd like to do is invite anybody from the left-hand side of the room, all right, who wants to call up, raise your hand. If you want to come up and speak, not come up, well, that's all right.
Okay, if I stay here, can you hear me?
You can stay there, fine.
I can roll over there.
No, you've got a microphone, you're fine. All right? And when there's someone, somebody on the right-hand side of the room. So state your name and address for the record, and then.
Okay, my name is Barbara Rebold. I live at 5102 Martin Lane. That row of Summers Houses, Martin is the stop sign on Summers, and I live two houses in there. So I've measured it. It's only .3 miles from this, and I could see this. You can't, it's not just viewable from Summers, it will be viewable from Martin as well. So I really liked what some of you have said about reducing the number of spaces because it doesn't seem, it seems to me that those are just being kept to make the building more valuable to a next occupant perhaps, and not really necessary for right now. Also, if it's operating 24 hours, and I know this happened down at the soccer fields, I haven't seen anything about lighting and whether lighting is going to be coming right into the backs of these Summers Houses. So I know that that has to be taken care of as well. I also want to address some of the early comments about ADA parking. Now, you can see I use a scooter, but I often use canes, and walking 24-foot ramp is not easy. And all of the ADA, to be compliant, it takes into account wheelchairs and scooters. But most of the people who are, who need the ADA are people with mobility problems. And so being closer to the office, as some of the gentlemen have suggested, is extremely important. I don't care if it's compliant or not. Historic private preservation ordinance, I would have to say, not just the Historical Commission cares about this, I care about this too, and I'm not on the Historic Commission. It is better for the quality of our township to keep that piece. I also understand there's a comprehensive plan for this area. I've never seen it, but I've heard it talked about, and I don't believe that a warehouse fits in with our comprehensive plan for this area. And I don't hear anybody talking about, why not make the building smaller? I know it's supposed to be a warehouse, and the larger it is, the more it can hold. But, and I know it was purchased for $1.1 million, and you have to make a return on your investment, but why not make the building smaller? Right now, it is coming, you can see it. It's like right in the backyards of, I can't read what address it is, but my neighbors are sitting right here. Let me finish.
All right, all right, all right. We can cover that. In fact, you can speak if you want to, but, okay.
And also, if you reduce the number of parking spaces, you could put more trees in, because the trees idea, I do like that trees idea. And I wanted to address the Chelsea Parkway traffic problem, and we keep talking about the traffic coming down Chelsea Parkway to Chichester Avenue. But right now, there's already a problem going from Chichester Avenue up Chelsea and at the Chelsea and 322 intersection. It already backs up. Nobody on 322 wants to let you out. There's not a left-hand turn signal. Maybe that's in part of the 322 planning, but it is good. But I think it's already a problem, and this will just make it worse. And thank you for listening.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Gentlemen back here.
Yeah, I'm going to. This will be, it'll be like two.
Yeah, my name is Robert Morrison, 1606 Summers Lane. I would just like a copy of that map, and that's it.
I live at 5105 Martin Avenue. It's a street nobody knows what it really is. Penn Todd says it's lane, and the taxes say it's avenue, so it's whatever you want to call it.
What's the IRS saying? Never mind.
I want to know what's going in this warehouse. How do we prevent having hazardous material that close to home?
I think it's a great question, but I also think there's limitations on what we're allowed to have here in the township. George, you might want to speak to, that has nothing to do specifically with building, the building, it has to do with what type of businesses are permitted within.
It does have something. The codes.
No, I understand that. No, I understand that part of it.
I don't have the code to be able to give you verbatim in front of me. What I could tell you is that initially, this site, for many, many years, was zoned industrial, which would allow for noxious types of activities. A couple of years ago, when the board was going through, doing the 322 revitalization plan, they changed the zoning to industrial-commercial, which is the zoning that the township has that requires the more extensive buffer than any other zoning, which is what is here, which again, I know it is not a lot, but comparative to the other zoning districts, it's, I mean, the residential and the property at the buffer, and the uses are less invasive. Invasive. So they can't have, like, for instance, in our industrial, realistically, they could, it could be like a trash dump. It cannot be under industrial-commercial. So while that doesn't prevent it from being an industrial-type use, it's just, it's not those noxious-type uses that are allowed in industrial. An industrial area of the town would be if you were to go down 322, just past Market Street, where you see like Brandywine Arctic Ice, you know, those types of.
So we're saying, we're drums of. Don't get. Humble substances that in here. Other types. Safety. I've done the accidental release. A drum of. Drum of some ugly things that. And if you lose that drum at your loading dock, you could impact those neighbors. Is not. It'd be a couple of hundred feet. So that is a concern. It's something to be considered. That close to house. About that, I'm very confused yet on trucks. Are they going to come up and down Chichester Avenue and have to come Chelsea? Okay, that is a better thing. And the loading docks are on this bottom side of the building. I heard somebody say both loading docks.
Morgan Gisbari, and I'm. We moved to this address so that my husband, who is a cop here in Chichester, he could be close to both his children and his workplace that he loves. Tell on your faces, you do not care about these houses. This is ridiculous. This is too close to house. Not to mention, it's not that this was just concrete. When we all moved here, we have visions, we can see goats. I have pictures of my children at the fence with horses, goats. This is their childhood. This is too big and too close to residential areas. You can put trees in, that would actually make me feel a lot better if that was put in before the construction. It would. But either way, this is horrifying to look at. Think of this, your children going from goats to this. You, look at that. Look how close Gisbari would be to that. Is that scary? Is that a scary thought for you, for your children to go from that to that? Actually, don't answer. You know the answer. It's clear with the answer. And too close to. If you don't think that or agree with that, then you're not seeing what we're all seeing. You don't want to see it because. I have no problem with, I understand this was already bought, but this is way too big and way too close to residential houses. Traffic situation, this is going to be a nightmare. It is a little better that they're coming up a different route than I thought. I'm having a very hard time picturing the land and this being there and this not being very loud and just way too close to residential houses. I'm just having a really hard time. This was way, way, way bigger than I could have imagined. So it's very disappointing. I could cry. I'm very terrified by this.
Thank you. This side of the room, gentlemen.
Good evening, thank you. Anthony Davaccio, 1504 Summers Lane. So how much sunlight is going to get through into my yard when those trees stop growing? You know, all the trees for the site. I don't mind that I can't see. I care if I can see that property or not. What sunlight's still going to get through? And I mean, I'm along that fence line. Be put into perpetual darkness or shade? No? Do we know? Do we know what the decibel level is going to be? What sunlight is still going to be able to get through? What's the decibel level going to be? Do you really know what the decibel level along our street is going to be with the truck traffic coming in and out? There's no way you could possibly know that at this moment. How effective those trees are going to be mitigating the decibel level? Is there any information on that?
Are any other questions within the room? Yes.
Mary Morrison, 1606. The lighting was an issue. Are we going to have floodlights? Our living room is in the back of the house. Are we going to have to rearrange my house? Do we have floodlights? My second concern is, okay, you put a warehouse in, it's prosperous, it's going well, two or three years down the road, it crashes. So now, what do I have? An empty warehouse in my backyard that maybe the homeless are coming to? And I know you can't look down the road, but that's a concern of mine because we do have kids in the neighborhood. They hope to retire here. I don't think I want to now.
Thank you. I'm going, oh, go ahead.
Yes. I was a tractor trailer driver, okay? Okay, and what happened is...
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry? My name's Stanley Coombs. I live at 1508 Summers Lane. I live right at the fence. And I've been a tractor trailer driver for about fifty years, okay? Now, I don't know about with you, but the diesel smoke is a murder. It's murder. It doesn't go away. When you get one or two trucks, that's all it takes. And the truck's smoking, and then that's it. I mean, before they can idle their truck down, that smoke is in the air. And it'll stay, on a cloudy day, it stays in the air. And it gets on everything. It gets in your eyes, everything. So that's the problem right there. And if a truck, if a guy in the wintertime leaves his truck idle, bad call because when a truck idles, it builds up a smoke inside, then it blows off, and it goes right into the air. And the air becomes stagnant, believe me. And that's, you know, that's the thing that I'm saying because I know, because I've been around trucks, I've worked with trucks, I've driven trucks, and I still hold a Class A license. So I don't think, you know, I think it's a bad idea. It's a bad idea, trust me. Everybody along the fence, they think the same thing, believe me. And I work. And then I don't want trucks coming past my yard, you know, rattling my yard and rattling my walls and everything, believe me. I don't want that. It's not a good idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, we're going to open this up for potential phone questions. Those who might be listening, the call-in number is (571) 748-4021. (571) 748-4021. Once you dial in, there's a PIN number, (357) 1690 pound. PIN number is (357) 1690 pound. We'll give that about a minute or two and see if there's anybody out there who would make some comments.
Charlie, when we...
Sure.
Fun to answer Mrs. Rebold's question about the comprehensive, 2005 comprehensive to that, that also means avenue area, which traffic and bicyclists riding along a road to mention is, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, about the condition of the buildings. Our historic demarcation ordinance does prohibit... So the vacay shortly, so in the meantime, buildings are empty, they still...
There was one other comment there was, and I can relate to the comment and whatnot, and that is, the particular building that's being constructed fits within the zoning rules, respect to what's permitted to be built there, right? And unfortunately, that is called a by right permission, which is something that township could fight if it were against public policy or if it was against something like that. But by right, they have, by, excuse me? By right, under the zoning ordinances, that's the same, that's the same as any other statute that's written for enforcing traffic laws or enforcing how you live or anything else. That's the zoning that's there. The zoning that was there before would have permitted other types of buildings to be put there and other types of uses to be there. So the comprehensive plan, which Cindy was referring to, and a question came up about that, 2015, 2005, 2005, it was a joint comprehensive plan with Upper Chichester, Aston, Lower Chichester, I don't know if it was in there, maybe not. But anyway, that particular plan was written there. We're going to be looking at that again. And all that is, is a picture of what we think the future should look like, right? And we will be working on that, starting now and for the next year or two or whatever, to try to come up with a new comprehensive plan. But that's just a wish and a hope and a prayer. That's what we think it should look like. And then it's up to the residents like yourselves to come in and make comments like you did this evening with respect to how you feel about where you are, what is being built within the township, and what your concerns are. And hopefully, we'll be able to evade some of those concerns with further discussion. I'd say that without any information with respect to the disposition of the historical buildings on the property, a little concerned about some traffic that may or may not be able to get resolved, but just personal note, but the other information that we discussed tonight, I don't think we're positioned tonight whether, if we were to vote on it, we would say no tonight, so. And again, it'll be a public hearing. If they come back again, there'll be a public hearing. We'll have some further discussion. And anybody in the community is welcome to come back and voice their opinions. Your comments have been noted. They're part of the official record for this evening, right? And we thank you for coming. Andrew, I didn't hear anybody on the phone, so you can shut that down. How you doing? You email me on...
Now, are they going to come up and down Chichester Avenue and have to come Chelsea? And the loading docks are on this bottom side of the building. Morgan Gisbari, and I'm six...
Now, we'll have a report from Cindy Charney. Don't put that... Now, I'm looking, I'm looking for my agenda. All right, we'll go back to our agenda right now. There will not be a presentation from 3033 Market Street nor 900 Township Line Road. Opted not to come this evening. Next order of business is an update on our Heart and Soul project.
The Heart and Soul is still continuing to work towards completing the community action report, and they still hope to be done, I believe, within the next month.
George, you want to give us a SADO update?
I was hoping to get Brian Sedell here tonight, but he had a scheduling conflict. So I'm working with him to set up to see if he can be here for the next meeting or if we can set up an additional meeting sometime in time being for us to get together. So we have the draft table of contents completed, and then we have this working Excel sheet, which we've been pulling in the sections from the county SADO that we believe will fit into that draft table of contents, and then pulling in information from our previous discussion that we had about some of the administrative items, as well as some backend conversations that we've had. Again, the objective of the updating the SADO ordinance is kind of like what was talked about tonight, is the SADO ordinance we currently have, I believe, is from the seventies, I want to say. There was like a rewrite a little bit in the early nineties, but the true, like, context is from the 1970s. So the laws have changed, development has changed, and we'd like to get something that is more in line with current standards. We'd also like to have something that is functional for not only the engineers and the planners and the architects to, and the developers who are seasoned and do this quite a bit, but also something that's working for someone that maybe doesn't have that level of experience. So it's, the actual law portion of it is going to be condensed to a much smaller booklet, and then it's going to have a bunch of these like appendixes, which are design standards. And they're going to be written up and developed in a manner that you not only read them, but you can also see them. So there'll be lots of picture examples. So for instance, you know, I'm just, streetlights. Here's our standard streetlight. Here's what it looks like. Here's what it's called. Standard width and design of sidewalk in various areas, so that everybody who goes through that book can kind of see what Upper Chichester Township is going to look like. And then it makes it a lot easier as they come in, as developers do come in, to kind of show, you know, tonight we saw everything a little bit black and white.
And the idea was to tie recreation throughout the township, work on connecting people from one recreational asset to another recreational asset. The other element is heart and soul. So having these value statements and having a process now for soliciting feedback from the residents on each of these. So we now have a system in place that we can use to solicit feedback, as well as core values identified by the residents that we're trying to process. And then the SADO rewrite, going through this, having these design standards built to our ordinance so that they're in there and they're functional. So the plans all reference back to, you know, the street signs that we use, the traffic signals. So they kind of reference back to the ordinances that they. I think when we talk about how we're going to complete that comprehensive plan, I think us through the Planning Commission, it's really, I think it'd be beneficial to look at the strategy of how many plans can be done, how frequently, how long a plan should live, and what's the objective of it? Get that outline.
I think knowing about helping a comprehensive plan, and I think you mentioned a word, which I really like, which is the spine to kind of pull it all together. Can't build silos and hope that everything's going to fall together. You got to have some major standards that you're looking to and whatnot. So we need like a way of tying everything together. And I think that's probably the outline that you're talking about that we need to work towards. And after we do that, we'll figure out what the formatting needs to be, the length, and everything else like that. Could wind up with a document that looks, look to, you can have a lot of pride in it. This is what I looks like, for, now, future, and all the things that we're trying to do to make it more standardized and more consistent and community-driven type efforts to improve the township itself. And that's what Heart and Soul was all about, which is all community-driven. It's all coming up from what the people think. And then trying to make that happen in real time. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the annual review report, excuse me, annual report status update. And Cindy, I think you have something on that?
I do. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to talk to everybody. What I sent last night, this recent version, and.
All right, we have potentially some changes that could come about. So whatever, they're being discussed right now. So when we look at what the objection was, there's a couple of things in there that we've taken some umbrage with, and it's got nothing to do with what you wrote. So, so I will be discussing that with the party that has a problem with it. And if we can resolve that, we'll have a final copy out for your approval. And we'd like to sign that and get it off to the Board of Commissioners because the due date, well, it's not the due date. It's supposed to be prepared by March 1st. It's prepared. I think we'll get this rectified within the next day or two. Very, very minor. Whatever copy you had from Cindy last night, bank on that being 99.9% of what we're going to send. And if there's some umbrage or some language that might change the latter part of it.
And I believe with the work that's been done, I believe you met the requirement to have it prepared for March.
Yes.
Thoroughly prepared. So vet it out, and then bring it, we can have printed out copies of the vetted final for March, sign off on it March, and then present it at the board.
All right, other items, go around the table, start with Greg this time. Okay, I have one item I want to talk to. George and I talked about this, I don't know, four months ago, five months ago. And that is, we're having some additional plans coming in. And I had an opportunity with one of the plans to sit through some of the process before it came to the Planning Commission, to sit and observe as an observer. For instance, it was, what was it, the Construction Committee, George? Did I think, it was a Construction Committee. What George and I discussed, Mike Odeoso also, who happens to be the Commissioners responsible for Planning Commission, he's responsible for reporting to the Board. In any event, one of the things we're thinking about is appointing one of us as a person associated with connecting to the Planning Commission, pre-presentation. In other words, you live with the plan. When plan's being presented, you get copies right up front. You get an opportunity to sit in on some meetings. You might have some discussions with the Valper, et cetera, whatnot, as the things are being put together and whatnot. And then you would have a better background with respect to the interests and concerns with respect to the Planning Commission. Bring it back, bring her back to the Board and report out to the Board and have more insight into what's going on, other than just reading Alex's memorandum of concerns and somebody else's memorandum of concerns. What we get right now, we get the Fire Marshal's report, we get the Zoning Officer's report, we get the report from the engineer, et cetera, et cetera. Along with hearing a live report that you heard from the developer and what their concerns. I think it's a good idea. I don't know if it'll fly. I don't know if we have enough interest. It probably would take a little bit more time. You may or may not have available. It's a good idea, but not me. So we'll give that some thought. We don't know if it's something that's workable or doable. But it kind of lets us own a little bit more of the process than we currently have because you're more or less in on some of the concerns. Like, we see the results of what's already been worked out between the township and the builder as, or the developer, as things are being presented and being discussed as they're going through the process. We come up at the finish line saying Alex has about five issues that he's really, really hot on that have to be addressed, or the zoning officer has something that they're concerned about. We're in the middle of it. Has more to do with maybe directing on whether that should have been a warehouse or not. I wasn't talking about one person. I was talking about rotating different plans. As the plans come in, we'd say, hey, we've got a plan here. I mean, I don't know what the criteria might be. We could, it might be something that's in the ward. It might be something you're interested in. It could be a lot of historical type things related to it. And you might be like, hey, let me in on that because I can help them. You could help them up front, recognize what their hurdles are that they have to go through in order to do what they want to do. And if we had something like that with this particular project we're listening to tonight, maybe some of the things that we had concerns about would have been resolved. We don't. Nothing wrong with another voice in the room, as long as it's a reason. I don't know. Once we get together as a group, we start discussing it. Now, we have Sunshine problems. We have to have a public meeting, which is okay. We could do that. Well, we could have a report out during a public meeting and that would serve that purpose if we could have a discussion. The only time we can have private meetings is when we're not talking about something that is affecting the public. There's a lot of things that's part of it. I mean, the public has a right to know. That's what the Sunshine laws are all about. So if we're doing something that's going to impact on the public with respect to a development or anything else that might come before us, then we need to share what we're talking about with them. Yeah, well, if somebody was going to brief us, that would have, I would think that would have to be. Other than that, nothing. That I'm going to adjourn the meeting? Go ahead.